I wonder what might be on the agenda tonight? We shall see in a little bit. If everybody can please rise and we have some Boy Scouts Weblos with us. Guys, if you could come on up. They're gonna help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. They have the flag behind them.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, thank you so much. Why don't you just tell us a little bit about the troop, Matt? You can use the microphone right over there, it'd be a little easier for everyone to hear. Yeah, go ahead.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Matthew Gibbons and this is PAC 608. These are the We Blow Twos, otherwise known as the Arrow of Light, and they are representing dens one and dens two from our host organization at First United Methodist, or FUMCO, right up the street. And we meet at the Kids Are Kids, All About Kids daycare. It's only been five years that we've been meeting there, I should get the name right. But, uh, thank you very much for our hosts and thank you all very much for allowing us to be here. And, um, we're really enjoying seeing around the city hall for the first time. And, uh, wanna let the boys introduce themselves very quickly.
You can take it out of there.
My name is Colin Gibbons. I am a fifth grader at Lawton Elementary School. And this is my fifth year of Scouts.
Oh, welcome. Good job.
My name is Heath Schuman. I'm a fifth grader and I attend Carrollon Elementary and this is my fifth year in Scouts.
My name, my name is Drew Hahn. I am a fifth grader and I attend Lawton Elementary.
My name is Matthew and I do Florida Voctral and this has been my fifth year.
My name is Nathaniel Mixa and I go to Lawton Elementary and I've been in Scouts for five years.
Terrific. Do you wanna say anything or no? Okay. Who's that, Matt?
And this is Gabriel and he is a fifth grader and, uh, has been in our den with us for two years now.
Oh, great. Give 'em all a big round of applause. Thank you so much, guys. No, our pleasure. Mr. Cobb, would you like to lead us in the invocation? I don't see Chief White. Oh, there he is, Chief White. I would, no, come on, Chief White. You weren't in your usual seat over there.
Trying to keep things moving.
I think it's appropriate that the fire chief give the police chiefs the invocation, don't you?
Yes. I do. And there's some reason behind having to make them swear in. You don't make a fire chief swear in, but you make the police swear in. I don't know about y'all, but I've never felt so safe with all these police chiefs here tonight. If you'd like to join me in a word of prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, we, we thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy, the ability to meet here tonight and the decisions that are made at the local level and how significant they are to this hometown community. We're reminded of the fragile nature of our law enforcement professional careers and just what they do for us every single day of the year, allowing us to rest our head on our pillow at nighttime. Father God, we thank you for the career and the service of Chief Jeffrey Chudnow and what he has meant to this community. And we pray for the newest chief stepping onboard in our community, Dale Coleman, that you would bless him, you'd protect him, you'd grant him the leadership capabilities and surround him with those who were mentor to him and give him that advice which you would ask him to, to, uh, enjoy. So, Lord, we lift this up into your name. Amen.
Thank you, Chief. At this time, I'd like to call our meeting to order. It is approximately 6:35 PM. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Oviedo City Council meeting. This evening, we have four members present. Just marked Councilman Britton is away on assignment for NASA, so he will be missing this evening. Our first order of business is the oath of office for our new police chief, as was mentioned. So, if council can join me in the front. Chief, come on up. Chiefs, why don't you all come on up? Chief would like you to join him. And Sheriff, of course. You too, Chief. You know, it's kinda confusing now. It's either Chief Jeff, we just don't know, but... We don't want any blood or anything like that. So, there'll be no blood? No? Alrighty. You gonna hold the Bible for him? Okay. Boy, that's a big pen. Alrighty. Dale, you ready?
I'm ready.
Alright, you place your hand on the Bible, Bible and repeat after me, please. I, Dale Coleman...
I, Dale Coleman...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support, protect, and defend...
To support, protect, and defend...
...the Constitution and the government...
The Constitution and the government...
...of the United States...
Of the United States...
...the state of Florida...
The state of Florida...
...and the city of Oviedo...
And the city of Oviedo...
...that I am duly qualified to hold off, hold office...
And I'm duly qualified to hold office...
...under the Constitution of the state...
Under the Constitution of the state...
...and that I will faithfully and impartially...
And I will faithfully and impartially...
...and to the best of my ability...
And to the best of my ability...
...perform the duties of the office of Police Chief of the City of Oviedo...
The duties of the Police Chief of the City of Oviedo...
...in accordance with the Constitution...
In accordance with the Constitution...
...the laws of the state of Florida...
The laws of the state of Florida...
...the city charter...
The city charter...
...and all other applicable laws and ethical codes...
And all other applicable laws and codes...
...relating to the position and duties...
Relating to the position and duties...
...of which I am about to assume...
Of which I'm about to assume...
So, help me, God.
So, help me, God.
Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you.
Alrighty, now we have the paramedics, just in case. That only happened one time with a paramedic, actually. His wife, yeah, his wife got him. Chief, congratulations. Big round of applause for the new chief. Dale, I'm gonna turn it over to you for a few words and then I'm sure there's gonna be a whole bunch of rounds of pictures, so we'll get all of those done and take your time. This is your moment.
Whew, this is thirty-one years in the making for me. I wanna thank everybody that's been a, um, been part of my life, uh, that's influenced me, that's caused me to struggle, caused me to be happy, caused me to do everything to be at this point. I look forward to working with the chiefs and the sheriff of Seminole County and other agencies that are here and represented. To me, it's, uh, uh, it's, it's great to have that feeling that they come in and support, uh, somebody else coming into an office. Look forward to it. They're great, they're great people to work with, great organizations. And I look forward with the men and women of our department and the city to, uh, to take this organization farther than it's ever been before and continue the progress that Chief Chudnow has started and implemented, to take those programs and, and keep them going and, and develop new programs. And, uh, it's a great time to be, uh, in Oviedo. It's a great time, it's a great place to work, it's a great place to live, and I look forward to doing the best job we can possibly do.
Well, Chief, thank you so much. We look forward to it. Congratulations, Chief. Give them a round of applause as well, guys. And, of course, we have our Sheriff, Dennis Lehman. Sheriff, uh, give him a big round of applause, Oviedo resident as well. Alrighty, now we, I'm sure he's gonna wanna do pictures of the police officers, his family.
My mom, Bert, does not buy this at all. So, love you, Bert. And my daughter, Rita. Graduated UCF. And my mom, Chris, graduated UCF. My son, Fred, graduated UCF. And my daughter, Deborah, graduated UCF.
We're gonna get a little tired of that. How about you, Ruth? Yeah? Alright, here we go. One more time. Get it? Chief, do you want any, any other photos? Chief? Chief has been with us thirty-one years. Uh, he's homegrown here at Oviedo, he's a good man. Congratulations, Chief, great job. Five minute recess, let everybody clear for the chief's business today.
I think it's appropriate that the fire chief give the police chiefs the invocation, don't you?
Yes. I do. And there's some reason behind having to make them swear in. You don't make a fire chief swear in, but you make the police swear in. I don't know about y'all, but I've never felt so safe with all these police chiefs here tonight. If you'd like to join me in a word of prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, we, we thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy, the ability to meet here tonight and the decisions that are made at the local level and how significant they are to this hometown community. We're reminded of the fragile nature of our law enforcement professional careers and just what they do for us every single day of the year, allowing us to rest our head on our pillow at nighttime. Father God, we thank you for the career and the service of Chief Jeffrey Chudnow and what he has meant to this community. And we pray for the newest chief stepping onboard in our community, Dale Coleman, that you would bless him, you'd protect him, you'd grant him the leadership capabilities and surround him with those who were mentor to him and give him that advice which you would ask him to, to, uh, enjoy. So, Lord, we lift this up into your name. Amen.
Thank you, Chief. At this time, I'd like to call our meeting to order. It is approximately 6:35 PM. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Oviedo City Council meeting. This evening, we have four members present. Just marked Councilman Britton is away on assignment for NASA, so he will be missing this evening. Our first order of business is the oath of office for our new police chief, as was mentioned. So, if council can join me in the front. Chief, come on up. Test, test. Alright, there we go. Everybody can hear me?
Yes.
Alrighty. Um, moving on on the agenda, our next order of business is the approval of the minutes for October 2nd, 2017. I'd like to entertain a motion to do so.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion?
Looks good. Looks good.
Councilmember?
It's good.
Alrighty, hearing none, we'll call the vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Did I get an aye from the audience?
Scouts.
Awesome. Wait, 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 hang on, hang on one second, one second. Have a seat. Councilman Britton was also a scout for many years, so he won't mind that you're in his seat, but, uh, you're gonna hang out here now with us, okay?
Sweet.
Alrighty, cause that, yeah, but just, just don't say anything, you're gonna confuse the clerk, alright?
No, I'm like that.
Alrighty, we're gonna move on on our agenda. Our first item in business is, uh, public comment. I do have one written request this evening from, uh, H. Alexander Duncan. Come on up. Just name for the record and off you go.
H. Alexander Duncan.
of the city. So that's not in favor of citizens, that's in favor of the city. It says it right there, you can slice it and say it however you guys want it, but that's what it is. So all I'm asking, oh, oh, and you mentioned the JPA last time, you guys have 9,400 acres of transition zones, okay? So obviously those 9,400 acres aren't in the city limits. And as the county charter states, the rural boundary can be built in either by three votes of the county commission or by necessity. It's in their comp plan, it's in their charter. So anybody here or anybody watching can go and fact-check anything that I'm saying right now. So all I want to say is, again, I'm asking, oh, and Mr. Cobb, you mentioned Willingham Road. So I went online, and online I found at least three properties that advertised they're for sale on Willingham Road, and one of the perks is what? Automatic annexation into the city. That's how they put it. As well, in the joint planning agreement, all properties 10 acres or less will be annexed into the city upon consent of ownership, not request of ownership, upon consent. Meaning, the city's going to say, hey, do you want to let us annex you? As long as they say yes, not they come to the city. So, and all of this is based on the EAR of 1999, which I'm pretty sure most of you know about because you're a part of. So I'm going to leave it at that because my time's up, but I think you guys get the drift of where I'm going with this, and I'll just ask it again. I just want more transparency, openness, and layman terms when discussing future and any further annexation to be taking place by the city of Oviedo with citizens in the city and surrounding communities. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of the written requests. Is there anybody else who would like to address city council? Yes, come on up. Just need you to name an address for the record and...
Yes, good evening. My name's Ed Howell. I live at 2760 Hazel Grove Lane in the Live Oak section of Oviedo. And the reason I'm here tonight is I wanted to ask about the retention basin or retention pond number 14. Because of Hurricane Irma, there was a breakout by the skimmer on there, and that all the, most of the water, or I should say about 10 feet of the water, seemed to have left the lake and it's going back into the conservation area. And we were told that it's going to be something like 12 to 18 months for the fix on that. So I wanted to find out what the status was on it and also why it would take that long.
Sir, to be honest, I don't think any of us have been briefed on that, but our public works director is right back there in the corner, Bobby Wyatt. Why don't you just ask him, and I'm sure Bobby can brief you on it.
Very good, thank you.
All righty. I'm sure they're going to take care of it, though. You're welcome, of course. Is there anybody else who would like to address city council? Seeing in hearing none, I am going to close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to our consent agenda. This evening, our consent agenda is made up of items number 4 through 10. What is the pleasure of council? Mr. Mayor? Deputy Mayor?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Deputy Mayor, you have the floor.
No, sir, it all looks fine.
Secondor has the floor.
Looks good.
Councilmember?
Just wanted to encourage everybody on item number nine to pay close attention to the wording of this grant. It's $367,000 contingent on St. John's getting funding, and it ends at one year. But I talked to staff a little bit ahead of the meeting, but just want to reiterate here that we can't dilly-dally on any of these projects. We've got to prioritize them because we don't know how long the funding will be there.
Thank you. I have no comments on it, so with that being said, the motion on table is to adopt. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Let me just catch up to everybody here, and then we're going to move on to item number 11, which is ordinance number 1659. Mr. Group?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Oviedo, Florida pertaining to the use of golf carts upon designated roads within the city of Oviedo subject to specified restrictions and the provisions of state law, providing for legislative purposes, findings, and intent, providing for definitions, providing for the designation and provision of roads and the potential addition of roads, providing for authorized means of use and prohibited and unlawful means of use, providing for registration, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for signage only as may be required by state law, providing for enforcement, penalties, and collections, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for a savings provision, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, as well as the correction of scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date and a contingent sunset provision. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten us?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 1659, it provides for the orderly operation of golf carts on designated city streets and roads, and it sets standards for the operation of golf carts within a specified area. It establishes a pilot program to permit and regulate the operation of golf carts on these roadways, which are in the Twin Rivers neighborhood located on the east side of Lockwood Boulevard. It mainly follows state statute, but also has certain requirements that are above and what we would say above and beyond the state statute. It allows that the golf carts may be operated on the roadways, which are in the map that are being shown on the screen there, that the carts may be operated by a person who holds a valid driver's license, that the carts may, those operating the carts must maintain certain levels of insurance, that the carts are basically street legal, they have efficient brakes and parking brakes, reliable steering and tires and rearview mirror horns, reflective apparatus. They also have headlights, brake lights, turn signals, and windshield. The number of occupants cannot exceed the number of seats within the golf cart. Children three and under must be in an approved restraint, a proper street to restrain. Also federally approved child restraint devices for children over five. Animals must be transported in the most humane way and manner. And then there's also a registration requirement for it. It becomes, this ordinance will become effective upon adoption and will expire on April 1st, 2018 unless the city council adopts a resolution to set the effectiveness into perpetuity. It's recommended that the city council conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1659.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. I have no written requests. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address council on ordinance number 1659? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move, we approve ordinance 1659.
We have a motion and a second. Councilmember, you have the floor.
I really hope this goes well because I think we need something like this in the city. That's it, though.
Great. Deputy Mayor? Great. Councilman Pollak?
I had a couple of questions on the language in here of the Attorney General's opinion. There were some things in our code that specified, you know, the age of, you know, having a driver's license, also the registration stickers for them and all that, and it looked like the Attorney General's opinion was that we weren't allowed to do that. Can you, can you help us with that a little bit?
The Attorney General's opinions can be read to be preemptive, as so much of the legislation this past today could be read to be preemptive. But in our judgment, these are reasonable home rule provisions that can be incorporated into an ordinance, and I know Police Chief Chudnow was of the firm belief, and I think that Chief Coleman is, as are other police chiefs who have had served jurisdictions that have enacted similar ordinances, that these provisions are essential to protect the public health, safety, and welfare if golf carts are to be allowed within the jurisdiction. So I think to some extent, the Attorney General is holding the line on the view in Tallahassee today, which local governments' powers are limited. This ordinance does go beyond that view and exercise the home rule powers of the city, and the reason for that is because of the necessity, in the view of law enforcement personnel, and I would concur with that, to have these safety provisions in such an ordinance. Does that help?
Yes. And the only other thing I had is, if this, if this goes forward after the test period, you know, I'd like to see a little bit more on how communities can, can come to the city and request, you know, to be a golf cart community, basically, what they, you know, some guidelines and what they need to do, because I could see there's a lot of, a lot of larger communities in the area that it'd be nice to have a golf cart to ride around in. Other than that, I'm good.
Thank you, councilmember. Well, just briefly, I think it's a good experiment. We'll see what happens. I think that, as Councilman Pollak was alluding to, there's some bigger communities, Live Oak and Sanctuary come to mind with centralized clubhouse and facilities where legalized golf carts might be of benefit to those folks, especially Live Oak with the new Publix up in the front. But, you know, let's, let's see how the test case goes, and then we can have a discussion on expansion. And maybe we can get a report back in, you know, six months or so, and we'll see how Twin Rivers is doing with it, and then we'll go from there. All righty. Is there anything else for the good of the order from anyone? Councilmember?
Well, if everybody else is thinking expansion is a good idea, I've thought that all along, do we want to extend the trial area? Or I guess it's more of a question for, than the chief. There's a lot of communities where I think it would make sense.
Well, real quickly, you mean the area, not the time?
Correct.
Okay, the area required, to approve an area for the use of golf carts requires a safety study. The only safety study that I know of has been done as to the area that you're considering tonight. So you would need a new safety study, and that's the way it was done in other jurisdictions. Councilmember Pollak, as you'll know, there was a pilot project in Sanford, for example, and then later on, another community came in and said, we'd like to do it. Came to the city commission there, commission told the police chief to go do a safety study, and that's the way it worked.
Are you good with starting here?
Absolutely.
Now we know how to expand? All righty. Anything else for the good of the order? All righty, hearing none, call to vote. Motion on table is to adopt. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. 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 Opposed? Did you agree also? Awesome. Great job. You know, he's just like Councilman Britton, he's very quiet. All righty, moving along, first reading of ordinances, that is going to be item number 12. Get up to this. Mr. Group?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, can you read this for us? Thank you.
An ordinance of the city of Oviedo, Florida relating to the Public Arts Board, amending Section 2 of ordinance number 1653 relating to board membership, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for a savings provision, providing for conflicts, providing for codification, as well as the correction of scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. And that's your ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. And Trup, thank you for coming down tonight. We appreciated it, and we like having you here. Give him a big round of applause, guys. Thank you, Mr. Group. I'm sorry to interrupt. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 1660 is a response to a city council request that we make some changes to the makeup of the Public Arts Board that was adopted earlier. The first board was to have seven members with one ex officio member from city council. The council asked that we change the makeup of the board to make it so that it could have nine members on the board and to delete the city council ex officio member, and that's what this ordinance does. Tonight, the council has asked to read the ordinance by title, which we've done, and to schedule a public hearing for November 6th, 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for November 6th, 2017 on ordinance number 1660 here at the Oviedo City Hall in the city council chambers, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 PM.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Deputy Mayor or anything? Councilmember?
Well, we ditched the council ex officio member, but there's been some talk that it might be productive for us to partner with the Seminole Cultural Arts Council and maybe have one of their members be an ex officio member of our board, or we send a member their way. So if, if you guys are in agreement with that, I think the easiest thing is probably to have one of their board members sit in on our, our board as an ex officio member, just so there's some partnership there.
Well, that's interesting because they do have experience and money, so...
They do.
Bob?
I'm sorry? I'm good with that. I'm good with that, that sounds good.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, that's good, but would we have to change the ordinance again?
Yeah, I was just going to go over to Anya and ask him.
Redo the ordinance? That was incorporated?
We can do it.
Do we, are we able to do that before the final reading?
We can, I don't think, I don't, I...
We can bring it forward to you at the second reading as, with that revision and that being spoken of in the agenda memo, and your motion would be to approve the ordinance as amended.
Okay, great. And Mr. Group, if I remember, I think the Sanford Arts Board, Seminole County Cultural Arts sits on, don't they?
I think some members do, but not ex officio.
Oh, I see, okay. Well, that's actually a good idea. All righty, so we're all in agreement. And Mr. Group, Mr. Cobb, you'll bring that back to us, and then just inform us what the motion needs to be on the 7th or the 6th, excuse me, assuming it's going to pass. With that being said, anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, I'll call to vote. Motion on the table is scheduled a public hearing, November 6th, 2016, 6:30 PM here at City Hall, Oviedo City Council Chambers. All in favor, say aye. 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 Opposed? Motion carries. No resolutions, no discussion items. City manager, report.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one thing for you tonight. You should have received an email from Councilman Britton. He would like for you to set a discussion item for the November 6th council meeting to discuss the formation of a group of citizens, to develop ideas for senior citizens as part of the city's Communities for Lifetime program. And so I was, tonight I wanted to ask if you would allow us to put the discussion item on the agenda for the next meeting.
Let me check, I'll go up and down. Any objections?
Yes, good.
Yes, objections? Yes, good.
No, yes. Say, yes, we need it.
Okay. Good. That's what I thought you said, just checking. Councilman Pollak?
That's good.
No, we're good.
Great. Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else?
I just want to say welcome to Chief Coleman, and very happy that he's on board.
That, that is exciting, I will say that. All righty, let's see who's up. Mr. Group?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Group. Deputy Mayor, you're up.
Just a couple of things. Just one, again, he's not, I don't think he's still here, but just want to thank Chief Chudnow again for 10 very exceptional years, taking care of all of us here in the city. Chief did a great job, and I will tell you, I feel so comfortable with Dale now as the chief. It's almost like you've been, I was looking over and, you know, I had this rapport with the chief during meetings, I could sometimes look at him and know what he was thinking and whatever, but I just feel like you're already, it's like you've been here forever. You have been here forever, but, you know, it's, we are, we are in excellent hands, and I am going to pay tribute to Mr. Cobb. You know, we had Mr. Seber 10 years ago, made a great decision, and Mr. Cobb now, 10 years later, has also made a very good decision. So our department is in good hands, so Dale, many years safe, we'll all be there to support you. I finally, I got Dale's cell phone number this morning, which I needed.
Yeah, that was a mistake.
So that was good. Chief and I had lots of good, good talks about things, so, but Dale, welcome, and we're all thrilled for you, and I'm glad, I know how hard that is to read that oath, and I could tell, I could tell, you know, they, they get easier as you go along, so all the best for that. And then just one thing that, you know, sometimes, you know, people come to the podium and say things, and they're not quite true, but I, I do want to address, I wish he was in the room, but he's not here at the moment, what Mr. Alexander said, Mr. Duncan, rather, said at the, at the podium. Him and I have become sort of friends the last couple of weeks in talking, but, you know, I think it needs to be said, you know, especially now that it's election season, everybody likes to go on Facebook and post garbage. I don't post garbage on Facebook, I say it up here because I think that's, that's more important. But is he coming in?
Yep.
That's good. There he is. I was just responding to, just have a seat, I was just responding to what you said. I was saying, you and I have become friends the last couple of weeks, talking about stuff and transparency, but, you know, I think this annexation, because a lot of people that are in politics today, especially that want to seek this office, you know, talk about how, how the city of Oviedo is out of control with growth and everything like that, and, you know, in my view, this annexation that you talked about... And, you know, in my view, this annexation that you talked about, you know, having sat here for 12 years, a lot of it, you know, we're 15 square miles. A lot of it was infill things that were, you know, enclaves of the county that wanted to come into the city. And I think, I think what you all worry about, and I said this to you at the last meeting, you know, and I think most up here would agree with us, if not all, you know, the city of Oviedo, at least as long as I sit here, I will never, ever annex outside of my borders. And there have been people here that want it. We have a city, we're running a city. Unfortunately for us, you know, we're the first city outside the rural boundary. So, you know, people take a look at Oviedo and say, why are you guys doing this? Well, because this is a city and you're in the, in the country. And your, your style of life out there is wonderful. I love it. I ride through it all the time. But this council member is transparent, is never, ever, ever voting to annex in Chuliyota or outside our borders. Now, if another group gets up here and they want to change that, that's fine, but I don't like to go on Facebook and put stuff in here. I think you, you want us, you want to hear that. I said it to you at the last meeting. And, and, and listen, we all know where you're coming from. And, you know, I just think, especially with three weeks to go in the election, when, when you made that statement that we annex so much, that most of that was within the 15 miles, 15 square miles, that is the city, that just infill stuff. So I think you ever get somebody up here that says, we're gonna go annex Chuliyota and into Geneva, I'll be right there at the podium with you, arguing that. You know, there has to be, you know, a rural life and there has to be a city life and, and that's it. So I just want, I don't want you to walk out of here thinking like it's falling on deaf ears, but, because it's not.
I agree. Everybody's saying-
Right. Let, you and I, I don't want in the meeting to get out of-
Talk about it now.
I'll chat with you after the meeting, but I just want to let you know, there's, you could split this hairs many ways, but, you know, the city of Oviedo got this way, the annexation was not because we were taking over other cities. So I just wanted to bring that up. But other than that, everything's cool. You know, it's election time and it's all good and not to worry. Couple of weeks, we'll see what's happening. But, but I'm glad you came and you're welcome here anytime. But that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Good. Thank you, chief. Welcome again. Councilmember Sladek's up.
Well, I just want to clarify that I think we need to be careful with semantics. Councilmember Hankin just said we never annex outside the borders and even I have participated in that. There was a pre-annexation agreement for, I want to say it's like the thousand degree pizza area that was annexed from the county. Granted, it was, it was an enclave, but it was annexation. So we've got to be really precise in our wording.
Well, precise in the wording? That's exactly what I said. Enclave.
Okay.
What we're hearing is, we don't want you to go into Taintsville. We don't want you to go into Chuliyota.
We, we did go into Chuliyota. We, we let the, yeah, like, we've gone, I don't know if "we" is quite the right word because I wasn't, wasn't here to make those votes, but like Live Oak didn't used to be in city limits and now it is. So I think maybe a commitment that I'm willing to make, that maybe everybody else's intention too, is that there's a rural boundary line and that we want to respect that. And I, and I think that might have been what you were trying to communicate, that you don't want to go past the rural boundary line, which is, I've never wanted to go anywhere close to it, but the charter is what it is. If people approach us and say they want to annex, it's, it's a slippery slope and one that we'll have to, a bridge we'll have to cross later. Wanted to give a shout out though to Public Works. They, they ran out and, and I guess Parks and Rec may have been helping out too, with cleaning up outside Oak Forest today. There was a sidewalk that was uprooted by a tree and it was, it was kind of upsetting all the parents in the buttstock because their kids are playing on this. So thank you for, for quick attention to that. Also want to bring everybody's attention to the Rising that is coming up. It is the last weekend in October. It's a 5K that takes you past 10 buildings that are eligible to be on the National Register of Historic Places. A lot of people do not realize that we have more than 10 places that are eligible to be on the National Register. And if you'd like to see what some of them are, it's a nice compact 3.2 mile route. Some of it is just here, running down the trail because even the train tracks, or what used to be the train tracks, that is, that's historic as well. And then the following day, and even that, when you return from the 5K, you can have an interaction with people who are dressed up like actors from Oviedo's past, our founders. And it's a really neat place for kids to come, get a little bit of a lighthearted intro to some Oviedo history. On Sunday evening, there is a family-friendly, kid-friendly, during the twilight hours cemetery tour. It is actually at the cemetery and it's like theater in the rounds and there's nine stations and three of them are going at the same time. We start exactly at 6 o'clock on the button and at 7. It's a great event, so I hope you guys will-
Cemetery, just reminded me. Did we get that yet, Drew?
Cemetery at the dump?
Wait, I, I don't mean to interrupt, but I have to ask. Are we getting pancakes after the race?
Yes, there are pancakes. 100% whole grain pancakes with full fat buttermilk homemade the day before. So really great breakfast.
I will give you this, those throwing things are pretty good.
The pancakes are, they're like nothing you've ever had, these pancakes. So if you, if you haven't been out there-
And then you're gonna make us cookies afterwards, right?
Yeah, then there's cookies made out of pancake mix. I mean, the whole thing just spirals and keeps going. It's wonderful. But getting back to the, the transparency thing, I, I think this speaks to something that everybody is, is concerned about, and that is the forever conservation of the golf course. We bought it, we haven't quite locked it down, and it's as good as our word. So as long as everybody here does not want to develop it, we're good. But you guys had mentioned before that, that at a later date, we should bring back up the idea of giving a conservation easement to somebody who's not a politician. So bringing that back up now to see if anybody might be up for that discussion in the next month or two.
I need, I need more information. You need to elaborate on that a little bit.
Okay. Well, we still, that property still hypothetically has the right to have houses built on it. So whatever rights existed before still exist. So in theory, the city could, a future council, when we're all gone and doing who knows what we're doing, a pro-growth council could theoretically sell the golf course and it could theoretically be developed, as was the concern when it was originally procured.
Do you know for four or five years, I mean, before you came, we, we have Britton, the mayor, and myself, and Shank. Well, Shank really wasn't, I'm not really sure where he was, but I know that he didn't want to see 400 homes there. But I, I think this group that sits here, you know, we have a plan that's being executed right now. It's three-year plan. It's first year's looking good. Nobody wants 400 houses on that, on that property. And I, I'll tell you what, you know, I, I don't worry about tipping my hand. That's 300 acres. As long as I sit here, I will never vote for houses on that. And I will do everything in my power, and I think everybody else would, to not have houses there. You know, we have to remember-
But future councils, and that's the thing, we're good for it. We can vote that in and protect it for future people, even when we're gone. I'm thinking like the 25-year plan, because I, I will not be here 20 years from now, let alone 25, but I still don't want to develop.
But, but you could say that, you could say that for, for most of, of the Parks and Rec space that we have now, couldn't you?
We could.
So, so-
But this is special and different because we got it for the purpose of not developing it. And it's easy enough to give a third party control, enough control, and we can still retain all the rights to use it as a golf course, do what we like as a passive recreation and golf, a variety of things, but let a third person say, you know, if anybody tries to build houses here, we're, we're gonna come in and shut it down.
But you know what? I think you gotta let that plan go through because right now-
What, what plan, though?
The plan that we're doing for the golf course. It's going so well. I mean, that's what we want it to be.
This doesn't interfere with the plan at all, though. You get what I'm saying, though? It doesn't, it doesn't change any of our plans. It just protects when we're gone.
But, but I think the difference is, is that in order for that to be developed, to be sold, for anything to occur, there has to be a public hearing now. So, but Mr. Group, you've been trying to chime in.
No, no, I was just thinking, I mean, first of all, to go to your point, the property is public now and I suppose at some appropriate time it'll be-
Because we're holding that under public land, with PLI.
At some appropriate time, the land use and zoning will be changed to public, quasi-public. So that's sort of a commitment to maintain it in, in the public sphere. Giving it, giving it to some third party-
I don't know, we keep it.
And giving an easement to some third party over city property, I'm not, we have to look at that because I'm not sure there's a public, the public, the rationale would be so we won't do something else with it. I'm not sure that's a public purpose. You have to give public property to somebody, whoever, you have to have a public purpose. I'm not sure it's legitimate public purpose, say, just to prevent yourself from doing something. And, and also in terms of this property, I think if you could do that, it might be premature too, because remember, this property was purchased with bond proceeds and there's a project and the project's defined in the bond documents. And I'm not sure that you can, could give away rights to the project without adversely potentially affecting the bondholder. So it gets kind of complicated.
Mr. Group, let me ask you a different question. Let me ask what the council member's asking for, but in a, in a way that it possibly could be done. Could we remove from the PUD, the PUD, any of those ambiguous rights? Because, you know, that, that was never tested in court, whether they could be built or, or not. But in your opinion, they, they could not, but you could not say that a judge couldn't look another way and rule a different way. How do we, how do we change that PUD so the homes can't be built?
You're on the exact right track. The way you do it is you change the land use and the comp plan to public, quasi-public, and you convert the, the zoning to a public-
Right. So I don't want to put an overlay over it.
And you have done that. You've taken the put off because it's now publicly owned, publicly owned for a public purpose.
Every time you put an overlay over a piece of land, no matter how well-intentioned you are, then when you go to do it, well, when the city goes to do with it what they want, then we run into, you know, we have this conservation easement, we have this, we can't put concrete here, we can't do that, we can't put that road in there to make a parking lot.
That's what I'm going for.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're going for.
Well, you know, like the, the trailhead there by 417 and the Chamber, the old Chamber office, that used to be county-owned and then they sold it and now we've got high-rises going up. So this council is not interested in building high-rises on the golf course, but-
But the county, yeah, the county did that to buy the golf-
But they, they did this, yeah, they did the whole trade around it. So there are-
Mr. Mayor, when you convert it to public, quasi-public, other than comp plan and a public zoning, you will have taken all development rights, entitlements, possibilities off the problem.
Mr. Group, from what I just heard from some of the other members, let me just see if there's consensus, but I mean, that might be just the way to do this. Bob, what do you think?
That sounds good.
But bring us information on it before we just go do it. Deputy mayor?
I just want to, I want a golf course that works and it's working. I mean, you can bring us stuff to look, but I think this plan's got to run its course because I want, we spent years doing this and from every report that we have-
We're just trying to take away the development rights. That way, that way we don't even have to worry about it being developed.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, if you can get us there, but I mean, I don't want to see it become some vast wilderness, you know, I want it to stay the way it is. I do not want houses on that golf course ever, but yeah, I mean, that's fine.
I, I think that we're just trying to bring, put an end to the ambiguity that was in the legal ruling because of whether there's capacity in that PUD or not. If we eliminate that capacity, then it's a golf course. Mr. Cobb, what do you have?
I, yes, Mayor, that's been our intention, is to make the golf course have public land use and, and PLI zoning. And that way it, it takes it out of the PUD, is basically what we would do. And with, between the public land use, at least my opinion, between the public land use and the Econ, Huck Hattie River Protection Zone, I think we would accomplish what, what the council wants.
Right. I mean, because we bought this thing to, to extend, to expand stormwater storage, we bought this thing to put our wet water storage, we bought this for a myriad of other public purposes. If we throw a conservation easement on it, now we've got to go ask everybody else what we can do with it. And they turn around and say no, then what do we buy it for?
Well, it also affects your ability to get grants, FED grants, because you wouldn't own it and be, uh-
Right. Councilmember's intentions are great, but I think the way to do it is to strip out the development rights.
Well, but if we take them away, we can always give them back. That's my concern. So maybe a middle ground is, if we can get somebody to research this for free, I, I did talk a little bit with the University of Florida Center for Governmental Responsibility, and they're not opposed to taking it on, but if we don't want them to, they don't want to waste their time. But they've got a fleet of students who go up there, research everything, just lay out what are the choices. They do this for the legislature, state-level legislature, all the time.
I don't, I don't hear consensus to put a conservation easement on it.
Well, it's not a conservation easement. It would just be to tell, tell what are the choices and how do we accomplish the goal that I think everybody up here does have consensus for, without locking us down in a way that we don't intend to, with unforeseen consequences.
You know, what happens if you have a, what happens? Well, I have no doubt that it's going to, in, in two years, three years from now, you have this thriving golf course that's the place everybody wants to play with, which I have no doubt is going to be, from everything I've seen out there. So for me, I, I think this is, you know, I mean, I understand where you're going. You want to make sure it never gets developed. I, and I don't ever want to see it developed. That fought five years to do what we did. So I think you got to let this, this plan run its course and it's gonna, it's gonna be great and we're gonna have a golf course there for a long time. I mean, I, I think, I think we're just way too early on this.
And really, nobody was more intimately involved with this whole entire thing than me. And the whole entire purpose of it, through all of those years, was to save it from development, which we achieved that goal. I mean, that, that was-
Only as long as there's three votes to, to keep that goal. That, that's my only concern. When the, when land gets really scarce, it would be so easy to be like, hot diggity dog, there's 300 acres, we bring in some fill, we put in some high-rises. I can absolutely see-
Nah, that ain't gonna happen.
Fifty years down the road, somebody attempted to do something like that.
That ain't happening.
I, I think that Mr. Group can lock this thing up pretty tight. So why don't we see what Mr. Group and Mr. Cobb come up with?
Good.
And lock this thing up so it can't be developed without hindering our ability to do what we want to do with it or expand it or change it, whatever we need to do with it in the future. Uh, you know, because the wet water storage has to get there, the stormwater storage, obviously, the golf course does its job, it was flooded after Irma. Uh, thank goodness you didn't put the sand in before Irma, but, uh, would have been gone. Uh, the, the goal is noble, I, I have no problem supporting the goal, I just, um, you throw another layer over it, we run into conservation easements all the time where, you know, Parks and Rec wants to do something and it's, no, that has conservation easement on it, we can't do anything with it. And, you know, all they want to do is put a trail in. I, I hear you and I'm with you, but, you know, let's see what they come up with first.
We'll get there.
All right, that's it for me.
Alrighty. Let's see, we had a bunch of things this week. We had the, um, bowling tournament for the Police Foundation, uh, a couple of weeks back and they raised $7,000, right Matt? For the, um, for the cause, so that was excellent. It was a great, great event, it was nice to have it at a bigger venue, kind of missed having it here at Oviedo because that's kind of our hometown lanes, but, um, I can see why you moved it down there, it was much bigger, uh, and it was great. And I'm happy to report that, uh, Councilman Hankin and I came in second with our team. Uh, where's Adam, is he still here, Eckert? No, he left. Yeah, Adam Eckert brought in the collegiate bowlers from Gainesville, but, uh, we'll just leave that at that. It was fun. It was, it was a great night.
We beat them in Oviedo.
We beat them in Oviedo. Dale, welcome, I can't say it enough, um, 30 some odd years here with us, uh, you're in the rightful spot now, so best of luck with it and, uh, just continue to build on everything that you've all done over the last 30 years. Because I'm assuming over that time, how many chiefs have you been through? Four? And you're a number five? Congratulations. And Chief Chudnow, I know he left, but, uh, you know, we can't thank him enough, I mean, everything that he's done with the department, Chief Drago before him, Chief Peterson, I mean, you guys just keep making it better, I should go, so, keep it up. Yeah, Chief, we'll be replacing you one day. Yeah. And in 16 months, we'll have your name on that firehouse over there. Uh, yeoman's work, guys, cleaning up the city. Bobby, Chief, I mean, unbelievable job, Patrick, staff, everybody who was involved, 27 days, first pass is done, we have a few little areas here and there to get, um, stayed within the FEMA contract, which was, which was awesome, I think we went to one subcontractor to help us catch up a little bit, uh, but because of additional reimbursements that we expect from FEMA, it's really not going to change anything, uh, on our outlay, so, uh, awesome job. And Chief, the, they're out there getting fences right now, right? Because that's the question that we're, we're getting. Do we have any idea how long the fence pickup will take or? What do you think? Bobby, come on up here, just give us a quick update. Well, he's back the fire chief now.
I know.
He was now the EOC director.
It's convenient for him, right?
There was an email that came out that said he was turning it over to the appropriate department.
Yeah, yeah.
Welcome, appropriate.
Thank you very much. To answer your question regarding, um, fencing, actually the Parks Department's been doing that now for about a week and a half, on their own crew and Drew, I thank you very much, appreciate that help. Um, the contractor, uh, main contractor has started a mixed debris pickup, so they're doing both fencing and debris as, as they go along now on the second pass. Um, I would anticipate, um, it's, it's challenging to figure out how long it's going to take, it took 24 days, first pass, uh, first, second pass will go a lot faster, so probably half to two-thirds of that time, probably on, on the second pass.
Two to three weeks, in full fashion?
Yes, sir.
Fair enough. Thank you, Bobby.
Yes, sir.
And lastly, we heard, uh, from Dale, every member of his family is a UCF Knight, as are my daughters, so all I have to say is, um, I'm going to go down the list. Where are you ranked? Drew, where are you ranked?
FSU.
Uh-huh, uh-huh, where's FSU ranked? Any Gator fans in here? Where the Gator, where, where are you ranked? Let's see, UCF, Go Knights, number 20, undefeated. Clemson over here? Yeah, but you fell, where are you now? Who did you lose to? What was that high school team?
Notre Dame's still outranking everybody.
That's a lot of fun, come on. It's college football, uh, very proud of the Knights, we're going to keep flying the flag out front. Uh, this Friday, we'll raise it up again because they're going to play Navy, so that'll probably be the toughest test for the Knights, but, uh, you know, all we got to say is Go Knights, and really it's our hometown team, that's why I keep bringing this up. I mean, uh, you know, the stadium was pretty full on Saturday night, but it wasn't full and I, I can't figure out why. I mean, it's two miles down the road from us, it's, it's an inexpensive ticket, it's a great night, it's fun. Uh, so Go Knights and we've got to fill that stadium up.
We need to annex them. Then we'll all go.
Let's see, we'd have to get Carol on first, no, we'd have to start with the schools first.
Yeah. Let's do it.
Yeah, we'd have to get the schools first, then Carol, and then we'd have to go across into county, into Orange County, that'll be.
Hey, don't pay no attention, we ain't annexing nothing.
Yeah, I sure have taken notes back there, hm, UCF.
They're, they're not in the city of Orlando, I don't know that they want to be in Orange County.
We're not annexing UCF, stop. Oh, jeez, going to be the death of me, I swear. Alrighty, uh, that is the end of my report. Bob, you're up.
Welcome, Chief Coleman. No more deputies, straight up chief. Um, you got your Facebook ready for everybody to start tagging you on, on everything? Is that what you're doing right now?
I saw Chief Chudnow get tagged the other day, I thought it was great.
So, welcome, we're, we're very glad that, uh, you're here and, and, uh, look forward to working with you, so. And, uh, I'll reiterate, great job on the debris pickup and with everything. Um, I, I got the email about the bear-proof garbage cans, um, our, the, our current trucks don't, don't handle those, right?
No.
Oh, okay, alright. So I know that there's some areas that they could possibly use them, um, but, uh, other than that, I'm, I'm onboard with, uh, Councilman Britton's, uh, plan for senior, I, I've still got to do some more research on that myself as well, um, for, uh, the senior community. And, uh, and hopefully we can get this, uh, pond project, um, sooner than later so that we can start working on the old post office as well. So, that's all I have.
Great. Alrighty, future meeting dates. Actually, you know what, those bear cans, you know, in the, we got to get, can we get FWC down here? Patrick?
Can you help Alyssa? We may have lost her.
Get her, get her down to the rest of the members.